Good morning. Today is the ninth day of April, time is nine o'clock. Time set for the commission to have its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us, starting over here.
Good morning, Herb Cantilello.
Our car operations.
Zach Kirk.
Development services.
Rob Brown, treasurer's office.
Tim Clark, treasurer's office.
Steve O'Meara, IT.
Hallie Gardner, IT.
Lynn Gardner, IT.
Mike Clark, operations.
Don Bridge, clerk's office.
Scott Gobern, Parks and Lawways.
Melissa Ellington, procurement.
Zach Hammer, procurement.
Josh Brown, operations.
Richard Beck, development services.
Saul Sandler, Ada County elections.
Lorna Jorgensen, prosecutor's office.
Elizabeth Dunham, communications.
IT guy and his helper.
Trent Triple, county clerk.
Bob Perkins, Ada County procurement.
For triple county coroner.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, one more guy. All right.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Madam clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman Beck, we just want to add in a, an employee recognition to the agenda.
Okay, we'll add that to the first new business item. So that's had been added to the first new business item. Okay, we're all ready to go. And we have two items on unfinished business I'll need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove, remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that. Yeah, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. We have a review of submittals and pre, and approval of pre-qualifications list for bid two four zero three six.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, before you this morning, under unfinished business, we have two items, the first of which is the review of submittals and approval of pre-qualification list for bid two four zero three six, stage one of the ARPA Ada County Expo Idaho Park Construction. And the evaluation team has completed their initial evaluation of the contractor's qualification submittals. And we have a letter with the pre-qualified contractors and a recommendation for your consideration.
Could you read the letter?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
It's a letter dated April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two four zero three six. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the eight qualification submittals for bid two four zero three six. A score of seventy percent or higher is needed to be pre-qualified for stage two. The following are the contractors that scored seventy percent or better. The first contractor is IMCO General Construction. The second contractor is RSCI. The third contractor is Knife River Corporation, Mountain West. The fourth contractor is Wright Brothers, The Building Company. The fifth contractor is ESI. And our sixth contractor is CM Company Incorporated. These are all the contractors that scored seventy percent or better. There were two contractors, TDX Power Services and Strath General. They did not score seventy percent or better and will not be included on the pre-qualification list. The value, but the evaluation committee would like to request the board's approval of the pre-qualified list and, and permission to proceed to stage two of the category B process.
Okay, any questions? Here are none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the pre-qualification list and permission to proceed to stage two of the category B process for bid two four zero three six, stage one, ARPA Ada County Expo Idaho Park Construction.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks commissioners. Our second item is the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations for RFQ two four zero four one, the resolicitation of ARPA Design Services for Ada County Landfill Leach Eight Pond. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of the sole qualification statement for this project and we have a letter of their recommendation for your consideration.
Thank you, could you read the letter?
Yeah, it's a letter dated April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFQ two four zero four one. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the sole response for RFQ two four zero four one. A short list of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. A short list of qualified firms ranked in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, HDR Engineering Incorporated, they had a score of eighty-eight point zero. So the evaluation committee would like to request the board's approval of the final ranking and permission to enter fee negotiations, beginning with the number one ranked proposer. If negotiations are successful, the operations department will put back on the board's agenda for contract award consideration.
Thank you, is there any questions or discussions? Here are none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept the final rankings for RFQ two four zero four one, resolicitation of ARPA Design Services for Ada County Landfill, Leach Eight Pond, and authorize the ch, staff, staff to enter into the, into a fee negotiation, starting with the number one ranked firm.
I'll second that. Yeah, you've heard the, the motion, is there any discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks commissioners.
And now we have a couple of employee recognitions, I'll ask Commissioner Daley if you'll read the first one there, Commissioner Davidson if you can read the second one.
You should probably point out first, this is a rare simultaneous husband-wife recognition, I've never seen that before, so.
I can, I can hold hands now. It don't matter. Yeah, we can, only hands. Draw the line there. I don't want to work out of five years, we need behind.
Thank you, thank you both for your services. Lynn Gardner made the jump from being an Ada County Juvenile Probation Officer to Ada County IT as a desk side technician and has not stopped since, until now. As customer operations manager, his last position Lynn managed are frontline tech support technicians, always ensuring that Ada County received great tech support. His division ethos and humble and gracious technical support is a statement of how Lynn recognized that IT is always here to help, and that's true, no matter how bad things get. Lynn provided guidance and training, opportunities to his team, so that they could grow professionally and maybe even move to other IT positions if they wanted to work for that. We are proud of Lynn's effort in making IT a great place to work, as well as a place where users can call and are met with a friendly voice to help them when their computers act up. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working here, been 27 years, really has.
Okay.
Been a great place to work.
Well, thank you. And we'll have Ryan read Hallie's and then we'll see if anybody else wants to speak up, go ahead. All right, this is entitled, "The Queen of the Mainframe." Hallie Gardner, you may not know her, but her contributions to Ada County are enormous. From printing all county checks, jury summons, and many other things, Hallie kept the county moving forward. But wait, there's more. Have you ever wondered what happens to that old computer or printer that no longer works? Decommissioning and disposing of this hardware is yet another enormous task that Hallie championed diligently all these years. Hallie's attitude has been exemplary to all of us. We will miss her deep work ethic, seeing her and her smiling face around the office a great deal. Thank you, Hallie, for everything you have done for Ada County. Would you like to say anything in behalf of retired employees?
Thank you, chairman, commissioners. I was lucky enough to inherit a number of really good people when I got mine, when I took this position a few years ago. And here's two of them right here. It's interesting having a husband and wife team in the department, right? And what you have to do to make sure that that stays, you know, no handholding.
Yeah.
All that sort of, sort of split up. They obviously did different things, but you know, with Lynn, he's been one of my managers, been running our techs, so the folks that come and come by your desk, they all report to Lynn, and Lynn's got the kind of personality that really makes gentlemen that, and women that really do very good work and deal with folks who are not happy in the moment much of the time, and they handle it with grace, and it starts here with Lynn. Then Hallie, Hallie's job is probably the most unique job in IT. I think your last position, you're a systems engineer now, right?
Yeah.
And your position prior to that was called computer operator. And that's because she operated Ada County's printing machines that did all of our paychecks prior to all of the jury summons. I mean, you know, think about this, for how, how long have you been writing stuff?
Oh, yeah, thirty-two years.
I mean, think about how many killed trees.
Oh, yeah.
There's holes in the forest out there with Alice Bayson.
Yeah, lots of blue barbs.
And there's also a folder and a sealer, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's a pretty interesting mechanical process down there. But then she also shepherds our equipment, which can be a lot when we swap out equipment, it's, it's a big dang job. So we've been looking to fill holes for both these folks here the last few weeks, and we're gonna be okay, but man, I'm gonna miss you guys. Thank you for what you've done and putting up with me and helping me learn my job a few years ago, so.
It's been nice working for Steve.
Yes, absolutely.
I worked for Jeannie for quite a long time, and she was pretty good, but she was pretty harsh.
She was pretty harsh for your.
They're just better than us. And Tony and, and Kent, they're, they're great to work for, so, yeah. And I remember Brett Lopman, and I'd worked here like, I think maybe ten years, and he told me I was a lifer. I don't know why it made me so mad, but you should be going, yes, and I was like, I am not either a lifer, I, I, but here I am, and I'm proud of it.
Yeah. Well, congratulations on your, on your retirement, would you like to take a photo or anything? Well, come on, come on up, we'll, we'll congratulate you on your years of retirement.
You got Elizabeth here, we got a picture.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, where are we gonna?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like wall in here. It's just daily, you want to stand.
That works.
We're all doing it.
There you go.
Yes, congratulations on your years of service.
Big smiles, oh, nice, nice lineup here, very nice, very good, big smiles, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good. Well, thank you, it's been great working here, really has.
Really appreciate it.
It's worked really fast.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven years.
All right, thank you.
Good luck in your future.
Of course.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Think of us when you're fishing.
Moving on, we have some new business, we have a, a resolution, I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine seven one, ARPA Resolution three nine, for the use of liable expenses, expenses related to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget. Is there any discussion?
Not when I have.
Okay, Don, you want to give us an idea what this is?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
We know it's a resolution.
Put me on the spot. This is a, a simple increase when we originally allocated the funds, that's a guesstimate, until bids come in, and so we came in slightly higher, four thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars in the process, so we are requesting additional funds to be applied to this award.
Okay, thank you, is there any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just might say this, it's my understanding this is the Hubbard Study, correct?
Yes.
So this is, this is a water quality issue that we're trying to help Ada County address our water, water quantity, not quality, so that we can understand how the aquifers work together and so forth and so on. This is an important project for the county.
Yep, I think I agree, and I'm glad we're only having to increase it a little bit. Okay, any other discussion? Here are none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two nine seven one, and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number two nine seven one, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now we have some operations. We have change order number two, Ada County Landfill North Ravine, stage four. Any, any, any question or discussion on this change order?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is NRC four, which has been going on now for about nineteen months, and we kind of breezed through some of these change orders, but I think this one warrants a pause. This project, the moment you finish your stage at the landfill, you start planning for the next stage. As you know, they fill up pretty quick, so NRC four has been in the works for about four years, the design process, DEQ approval, removing topsoil, the final DEQ paperwork went in about two weeks ago. This is a final reduction to reduce the contract, this money goes back into the budget line, and then we start planning for NRC five. So we are wrapping this one up, and Herb's got a nice new blank canvas out there to start putting in trash.
Good.
Big milestone, big milestone.
All right, well, thanks. Any, any other discussions? Here are none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve change order number two, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell, NRC stage four, as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Yeah, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, procurement, go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Now that you've approved the resolution for the additional ARPA dollars for the Hubbard Reservoir Project, we can remove, we can move on to the review of proposals received and an award recommendation for goods and services, fifty thousand to one hundred thousand for the, for RFP two four zero four two, the ARPA Hubbard Reservoir Aquifer Storage Recovery. And we received two responses for this project, and would like to submit this letter of the proposals received and a recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, go ahead, please read the letter.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, it's a letter dated April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two four zero four two, the ARPA Hubbard Reservoir Aquifer Storage Recovery. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two four zero four two. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Integral Consulting Incorporated with a score of eighty-four point five zero. And number two, HDR Engineering Incorporated with a score of sixty-five point six six. It is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two four zero four two to Integral Consulting Incorporated as the number one ranked proposer.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the, an award recommendations for RFP two four zero four two, ARPA Hubbard Reservoir Aquifer Storage Recovery to Integral Consulting Incorporated as the first place applicant.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the, the motion, is there any discussion? Here are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
As the chairman, I would, I would just like to reiterate what I said before, this is, this is an important project for us to understand how the aquifers can be recharged with flood water, so that we can actually store underground, the same as we're storing above ground, in the valley for our future water needs.
Yep, good, thank you. Okay, moving on, we're to licenses. We have a couple of catering permits, and new licenses, license transfers, and license renewals, all except the motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three catering permits, one new license, three license transfers, and one hundred and thirteen license renewals. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have our distinguished clerk, Mr. Trent Triple.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, today, we're looking for the designation of the polling places with the May twenty-first election. Saul's here, he can, if you want to kind of express some of the numbers behind it and the process we've gone, it's been very smooth this year, we've had a new employee that we hired, has done a phenomenal job in securing and preparing these polling places for designation, but I'll let Saul talk to it here for a minute.
Thank you, Trent.
Don, go ahead.
So we have a hundred and sixty-two polling places this go-around, we'll be looking at thirty-three duals or combined locations. One of the reasons we have a uptick in dual locations is because we worked with our voters this last time and identified a number of areas where we had polling places directly across the street or very close adjacencies to one another, and it was actually creating voter confusion. So moving into the general election, we made the decision to combine some of those polling places in hopes of avoiding that voter confusion. A great example was Eagle City Hall and Eagle Public Library, were both polling locations, and so you would literally drive into the parking lot and there'd be both ear signs pointing in different directions. And so we worked to try and alleviate that and choose the best spaces out of all those. Couple of other things, we're increasing our ballot on demand for this go-around, we will have full paper backups just in case, but we're going up to twenty-seven ballot on demand sites, which obviously improves ballot security throughout the process and also the voter experience, so. Couple of things of note for this election coming up, but we're on track to have a good smooth election. Any questions?
Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a, what's, what's the reception on the voter on demand, how do people like it?
Um, it's been great, you know, the biggest positive reception that we have is actually from our chief judges, it really streamlines their process. What we're working on now is scaling the process. Voters also like that they don't have to stop in an additional line, you know, once they check in, that process is complete for them. So the, the reception's been great, you know, of course, there, there's always concern on our part about introducing new IT to the polling places, but it's been a really good experience so far, and our chief judges in particular really, really like it, so.
We have over eleven hundred different ballot styles in, in the May twenty-first election, and ballot on demand reduces the risk of us giving the wrong ballot to the voter, because there's so many splits and so many different ballot styles within the precinct that we have to be really on our game to make sure that when that voter shows up, that we're handing them the right ballot. With voter on demand, that eliminates that risk almost entirely, because they show up, check in, and their ballot is printed for them on the spot, so that they can go market and submit the ballot. So it's, it's a, it's a big lift, but we think it's the best for the county going forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just follow up, because, because that's because of taxing districts and the geography and where people are and what might be on the ballot in terms of fire district or cemetery district or whatever.
Or, or party affiliation, all kinds of different things, so.
And that, that may be confusing for the, that helps to reduce the confusion for the voter, as well as the, the election officials.
Mostly for the administration of the election for us, the voter hopefully gets the ballot and they don't see any difference in it, but we have much more, a higher level of confidence that everything went smoothly on our end. And I think it's faster too, because like Saul said, it eliminates a step in the process for the voter. They check in and get their ballot at the same spot rather than checking in and then moving to another location to get their ballot issued, so.
Do you have volunteers for all the polling places?
We're getting close, I, I think we're almost there, but not quite.
Which we are right now, we're looking very good on our chief judges and assistant chief judges, we're still waiting on a few staffing lists to come in from those chief judges and assistant chief judges, but I think we're getting close, we actually have a training coming up at Boise State University, and we're talking with the high schools as well. But I think we're getting close. We actually have a training coming up at Boise State University and we're talking with the high schools as well. We're trying to get the, uh, youth involved a little bit in this, but, uh, as of right now, we're looking good, uh, for staffing purposes.
They're actually paid volunteers, correct?
They are.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. I understand you sent out your first, uh, tranche of absentee ballots this week?
That's correct. They've been hitting mailboxes yesterday and today.
Okay, so yeah, if they hit them yesterday, they were sent out last week then.
Well, they, they were sent out, I think it was Saturday.
They hit the mail stream Friday night.
Friday night.
How many's gone out?
Just over four thousand so far.
And we just did another issuance of a thousand yesterday. So based on your, uh, uh, the number of absentees has been requested, does that give you a feel for what kind of turnout the election might be?
It's, it's very difficult to say. Um, a lot of things affect that turnout. You know, we have the three bond issues that are on the ballot now. Um, we think anywhere between twenty and thirty percent turnout for this election, so.
Okay, any other questions to the clerk's office?
If somebody requests a ballot that they're not entitled to request, how is that processed?
They don't get the ballot.
You notify them or is it logged into the system?
Paul Saul speak to the specifics of it.
So, um, Mr. Chris, I'm assuming you're talking about party affiliation and the rules, uh, within a primary election in terms of eligibility for ballot styles. So, uh, within the absentee process, uh, it limits their ballot selection to the parties that they are eligible for. Uh, of course, an unaffiliated voter can choose to affiliate with the Republican Constitution or Libertarian Party should they so choose and request that ballot style. But one of the nice things about ballot on demand is it will, and, uh, the equal books in general, is it will only give the voter the option of the eligible ballots that they have to vote, so they can't inadvertently make the wrong selection. And so that's a way that we limit that. You know, one of the challenges is, is sometimes a lot of individuals, we have many, uh, independent voters or unaffiliated voters here in Ada County, and they will by default, uh, choose an unaffiliated ballot. Uh, oftentimes they're unaware that's just judicial races and taxing districts and are pretty disappointed. Uh, but once that selection is made, that is final, so we can't issue a different type of ballot even if there's voter disappointment in that sense.
Saul, correct me if I'm wrong too, but if an unaffiliated voter requests a, uh, an affiliated ballot, they automatically become affiliated with that party in the system.
That is correct, with the exception of the Democratic Party, of course, which has an open record.
Hmm, so you don't have to file a separate, separate affiliation, you just have to request the ballot?
That is correct. So you can be unaffiliated at this point, request a Republican ballot, for instance, and the system will automatically affiliate you as a Republican moving forward.
But they won't automatically affiliate him with the Democrat Party if they choose that?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. It's, uh, has to do with the open primary versus closed primary rules.
Oh, okay. Okay, now, you had, uh, you were in the process of collecting or, or, or making available electronic ballot for overseas military? Has that been implemented?
That has not been implemented, Mr. Chair. Uh, we're still reviewing the grant possibility for that. Uh, the grant application would close April thirtieth, but we were just submit for that. Um, the soonest we could have that in place would be November if we choose to pursue that federal grant funding for that.
Because some, some of the, uh, some of the people are in far off places, don't get their ballot. They're in the military. I know the military actually allows that electronic balloting, but the taxing district has to be able to do it.
And we do offer an electronic ballot option as of this point. Um, however, the security protocols of some of the third-party vendors that offer that system are enhanced over what our current protocols are. And so that's what we're really exploring. Uh, by federal law, we do have to offer an outgoing electronic ballot option for individuals. And so we do do that presently, uh, but it becomes a difficult administrative task, particularly in, uh, general election years where we'll see, you know, over, well over a thousand, uh, requests for overseas ballots.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the claims journal.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think there's a motion that we need to.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We didn't do the motion.
Excuse me, we need to do, approve the motion for the polling place. All accept the motion for that.
Pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-four, three oh two, I move to designate the polling places for the day, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, primary election as presented by the clerk.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All locations are approved. Thank you. Well, next have claims journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims of the claims journal dated April fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Except we have the assessor's office. Do we have anyone here from the assessor's office? We do not. Next up, we have the treasurer's office.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm here today to review the monthly investment portfolio. Have a spare copy. So, uh, we didn't have a whole lot of activity this past month, so I'd like to focus if we just kind of look at the, the front page, the portfolio summary, and, uh, tomorrow is the consumer price index report. So, uh, I'm not sure how much attention, uh, everyone pays attention to that. Lately, it seems like more so because of the, uh, the way the market's been going and there's a lot of speculation on whether or not the, the Fed will raise rates. Uh, the, and it, it's very dependent on, on what these sort of numbers say. Um, the CPI number for tomorrow is forecast to be three point four percent. So tomorrow morning at six thirty our time, we'll see what that is and see how close it is. It's usually pretty close within, um, a fraction of a percentage point. Uh, the prior month, it was three point two, so that would represent an uptick and, uh, make it less likely that the Fed would raise rates. They'll probably hold. Uh, there had been talk a few months ago about decreases in rates, and it's looking more unlikely, uh, that that'll happen. And, and I don't know if you recall, but a few months ago, we talked a bit about the, the producer price index, which is a leading indicator. It had gone up and, and sure enough, if, if tomorrow's forecast plays out, we're starting to see that, uh, translate into the increase in the consumer price index. So, uh, what that means for our portfolio is if we look at the summary page, at the, uh, L-Gip, which is our top number, we've got a lot of money there, a hundred and fourteen million. And then the bottom number, our money market, we have a lot there, about seventy-four million. And so that'll be good for, um, our portfolio in terms of the assets that we have there. It'll, it'll give us a nice yield. So it's good, good for the county in that regard. And if you go to page six, which is our interest received by source, we, we tend to look at this each month because this is the actual amount of money we receive every, every month. And, uh, um, the L-Gip, you see, in February, it was quite high, one point three eight two million. Mostly that's a, a function of the amount of money we receive during tax collections. If you take our total interest received by source thus far in this fiscal year, we're at about a total of seven point two million, which averages about one point two million a month. And if we continue that trend, uh, we'd be just about fourteen point five million in interest earned for the year. It'll likely be slightly less than that because the big number on L-Gip of the one point three two represents the tax collections and we received more than half of our tax collections in that first half. But we should still see about fourteen, maybe slightly over fourteen million in actual interest received. Uh, a few more pages back, which is on page eleven, we did make one new purchase this month. It was a Fannie Mae. Uh, we, we purchased about one point one million was our cost. And if you look to the right on that chart, you'll see that the yield to maturity there is four point one seven. Uh, and so it's pretty much steady as she goes in terms of our portfolio. Uh, we continue to generate interest income that stays in our, uh, one of our money markets that we use for transactions. And, uh, the big amount of money that we got a couple of months back, you're seeing translate into these purchases. We, we have another one that we'll be doing this month from that couple of million that we had earned, uh, in interest. So other than that, it's just, uh, you know, we'll just keep kind of plugging along with our strategy and, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. On the, uh, interest received by source, uh, we have a, a large, uh, amount of money from ARPA. Which source is that money?
We don't show that here.
Where do we show it?
Well, we record, we, we keep track of it and that's segregated money from, uh, earnings interest for the county. It earns its own interest and we keep it segregated in its own L-Gip account. That is recorded, uh, on our, on our books and our accounting books, not our investment portfolio books, although we do have it as a separate listing in our investment portfolio. And then, of course, the clerk's office, uh, they maintain that and we balance with them. So in other words, we don't take that interest and roll it into the county's, uh, operating. It, it's segregated for ARPA.
However, it, it can be used for anything, correct?
It, it can, I, I think, and I'm not sure, uh, the discretion, it probably is the Commissioner's discretion, but for accounting purposes and recording purposes, we completely keep it segregated and, uh.
That was just a decision we made a couple of years ago to keep it segregated?
Uh, we did. We, we made that decision at the time.
And how much money is in that account?
Just under seventy-two million.
Do we?
It's, it's in.
No, I mean, I mean, interest, interest earnings.
Interest is close to about three point six million right now.
Three point six?
That's been, that's been earned off of the, the.
Yeah, that sounds right. I, I don't, I can't remember that, what it is at the moment, but.
All right.
Trent, obviously.
Yeah, so, so technically you'd say fourteen point five plus three point six.
That's, that's right, because we don't have it listed in here on page six.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Where, where's this, our coroner?
Yee-yee.
Yes, go ahead. You got a good report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you taking the time to look it over. Um, statistically, you know, we, uh, this reports for the first half of the fiscal year, our activities, uh, again, is still slightly elevated. Mostly, I, I would assume due to the, uh, the growth of the area. With growth comes death. Hate to be the bearer of that bad news, but it's reality. Couple of, uh, just one of the things I really wanted to note, however, in, in light of what we do there, our tissue donation referrals are up a hundred and eighty-seven percent from last year. Very pleased about that and that's due to that, uh, information data share that was set up back in November. Uh, so we're really happy with that. I know the, uh, the, our procurement organizations are really pleased with that data sharing. It helps them immensely with their, what they have to do, helping save lives and, and improve lives. Uh, so that's the, uh, that's one of the nice things we do for, for our community. Just other highlighted activities, as you can see, there's only, we didn't, it's not that we're not doing anything, it's just I don't have anything highlighted. We just had our, uh, website forms, uh, translated into Spanish, and so those are now available to the public in Spanish, uh, if they so choose. And the only other thing that I would, uh, need to ask you guys is, aside from the report, is, uh, if, I, I hope you know, I have a pet-friendly building currently and I just need to know your stance on allowing pets into the, uh, workplace. Yes, we have dogs. I allow dogs into the building. They're therapeutic to all staff, et cetera, et cetera. I'm getting this weird vibe from here. Apparently you didn't know that.
Well, I just didn't know we'd have it on our agenda today.
No, it's, it's, it was just a question to you guys. I don't, I'm not looking for a decision. I just.
Okay, well.
You know, how do you guys feel about that and?
We'll have to.
Yeah, maybe consider further.
I do have a question on the report. You have Ada County autopsies and you had non-Ada County residents. What's the difference?
Non-Ada County residents are people that die here that live somewhere else. So there are cases, but they live somewhere else. For example, we have the regional, uh, trauma center here, so, and we get people from Oregon, all, uh, surrounding counties. Um, so those autopsies, uh, fall under our jurisdiction if they die inside Ada County. So it doesn't necessarily, and I don't count the Ada County contracts in that number. These are strictly Ada County cases where the, the deceased is not, is not a resident of Ada County.
But they passed away here.
Yes, they die here.
I've heard some counties do that. They stick them on an airplane.
And it has.
Send them to Ada County.
Uh, that, that wouldn't surprise me in today's world, so.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, when is dang building gonna be open?
My understanding is the certificate of occupancy is this week or next week. Oh, he ducked out on me. Well, there you are.
Commissioner's work.
Moved over.
We are hoping to get our final inspection today on building and then certificate of occupancy will follow in the next day or two and then we'll have to work through some final punch items and then put together a moving schedule with the, with the owner and staff. Very, very close.
So it could be somewhere before the end of the fiscal year.
Well, I think, uh, uh, my understanding that the big thing after certificate occupancy is IT gets to go in and do their thing. We're looking at May first-ish, but, uh, talking with staff, at least half the building, the mortgage side, uh, we will not move that portion of the building until the new building is one hundred percent ready to go. Then we'll bring those staff over. So that might be a week or two delay in there. Uh, as far as the administration investigations, uh, as soon as Bob hands me the keys, we can go.
So when you say IT has to wait for the certificate of occupancy, is that for wiring or is that just to put the computers in or?
City, city meridian required that, uh, county employees don't go install any equipment, um, in the facility or furnishings until after we get COO. And so that should happen here shortly and then we invite T to go, to go install all the computers and phones and all that in the inside of the facility and then we'll get his team to move shortly after.
But all the wiring's in place.
Wiring, everything's in place. Yeah, this is just, uh, you know, laptop computers, desktop computers, phones and so forth.
Seems unnecessarily restrictive by meridian.
Forty-one hundred line, but punch out your own.
At twenty, yeah, I think it was about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred, they're, they're down to a couple hundred left and a lot of us just putting the ceiling, replacing ceiling tiles and ceiling grid now that all the balancing is done.
All right. Okay, well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on here. We have, uh, development services.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have, uh, please present two final plats for your consideration today. Uh, the first one is the plat for Neville Ranch East subdivision. This is a residential subdivision with, uh, fifty-two residential lots, eight common lots. Staff has reviewed the application, finds that the developers satisfied all the applicable conditions of approval and the plat complies with, uh, applicable codes. And we recommend that the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp, uh, the final plat for Neville Ranch East subdivision.
Right, any questions? Hearing none, I'll, uh, accept the motion.
I'll move to approve application number two zero zero six zero zero one eight zero dash S Neville Ranch East subdivision and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Belvedere Farms.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Belvedere Farms is a two-lot final plat. Again, staff has reviewed the application, finds that all conditions have been satisfied and the plat complies with codes and recommend that the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp this plat as well.
Okay, any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve application number two zero two two zero one two two three dash S Belvedere Farm subdivision number two and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of. two and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have approval of several minutes. Any questions or discussions on those? No, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have a grant application next, a grant application to the Department of Energy for Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Anyone here to speak to that? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is in the works for, probably last summer. And so this is a voucher that we're applying for, an equipment voucher, and we decided or we discussed with our board that it would be used to provide a solar array on the juvenile probation building in Meridian. We were fortunate that operations had a little bit of funds to apply to this, so the, the grant allocation is 79,620. They will contribute 25,188 to the total project and then once it is complete, we will apply to be reimbursed for the voucher. And so we have had this grant previously, I understand, maybe in the last 10 years. So this is just another iteration.
Okay, any questions? How did we decide on that particular building?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so we, when we looked at the facilities and the size of the full of all takeaway that we can get, that facility allowed us to get it to where we can offset about 92, 93% of our electricity costs for that facility and so that's why we chose that one. It was also designed too with a south-facing roof and during the initial design for that facility, it was going to have solar on it. I understand they didn't have enough funding to put solar on it at that time, so it just laid, made out to be a perfect facility for us. It was already set up for solar and then the size of the building allowed us to offset the majority of our electricity costs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I will accept the motion.
I move to approve grant number 2405/A. Authorize the online completion and submission of the grant application by Don Bridge in the clerk's office and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Yeah, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, we've passed 2024 noxious weed notice. Is there any questions? I see we have Adam on the bridge there. Give us a little story.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is our general noxious weed notice that goes, that is required to be published by Idaho statute. This just elaborates which weeds are listed as noxious here in Ada County and what, it just kind of informs homeowners that these weeds are, these weed species are prohibited.
Okay, any questions?
Are there any new weeds on the list this year?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, no new weeds, the newest one being Cogan grass from last year, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
And just, and just a reminder to the public that under Idaho law, homeowners are responsible for taking care of, taking care of the weeds on their property.
Yes.
And that's part of why this is done.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How is the determination made which weeds go on the list?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, great question. Weed species are petitioned by any stakeholder, it could be a citizen of the state of Idaho or, you know, maybe an agency person, but essentially they petition the Idaho State Department of Agriculture for a listing. It goes under negotiated rulemaking so that they can bring all the stakeholders involved and discuss the potential listings and some, sometimes there are emergency listings that happen and those can be signed by the director of the Department of Agriculture for those weed species that are EDRR, Early Detection Rapid Response, and that we have very limited populations of and that we would like to control very quickly. But essentially those two ways is how a weed species becomes listed.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to authorize the chair to sign the 2023 noxious weed notice on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sirs.
Thank you. Next up, we have four events, interim events at Expo Idaho. Any questions or discussions?
So on this roller derby day, are they roller derby-ing inside one of the buildings?
Yes, sir, they are. And there's a correction on that, it should say reptile show number three, not re-tile.
Oh, duly noted. So we have two reptile shows.
Yeah, one re-tile first and then one reptile.
Re-tile for the reptile.
You figured that out pretty quick.
Okay, all right, any questions or discussions?
So the building, the floor all works out good for?
Yeah, they've done it, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, they've done that in the past out there. They just set up the floor and we'll put some bleachers around and they'll do their roller derby game. Pretty fun, actually.
Good. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Yeah, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
What circus on ice? Scanning range?
Yeah, they'll put down a portable ice floor and they'll do a circus or a show on top of the ice.
Oh, wow. In the building? You can get, you can get ice in there?
Yeah, they'll, they bring portable ice floor that'll have a refrigeration system that'll probably sit outside.
Interesting.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, we have Barbara Park and Event Center, we have two events.
I'll move to approve the two Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the docs on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have seven agreements. Any questions or discussions on any of these agreements?
Another water-related project on there, sea. Just going to note that because we've been talking about water issues. Or is that?
It's Barbara Dan.
That's right, Barbara Dan.
Right, it is the flow bypass which does relate the water for the irrigators downstream.
Any other question or issues? I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the seven agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the document, appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the weekly indigent items. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve these, to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated April 9, 2024. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other issues needing to be brought before the board? There are none, we'll be adjourned.